Welcome everybody for coming. Join us in the pleasure of the evening.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in favor. Mine was not the case. Police chief.
Next Wednesday I'd like to get some city representation with me. At the hospital they're doing a tabletop at three o'clock and trying to establish a protocol in case. I think it's tabletop drill and I mean there's several different factors that we probably need to consider. Prepare for the worst I guess and hope for the best so. Like to get somebody from the city they'd like to see that. I think county representation is always already going to be there so.
That's something Jake and Andy.
Yeah.
What was the specific day?
Yeah Wednesday at three o'clock at the hospital.
Are you going to be at that Jeff?
That's the first I knew of it. Okay. Just sure I got a message on my phone.
Fire chief. Got a couple of things. First one is as you probably saw on KTVO we had an appreciation gathering at the fire station for a gentleman who plucked out of the Lake Woffalo after he fell in when he was ice fishing. It was a really nice evening people got to meet Mr. Riggs. He walked in the door like I thought he was not bigger. We pulled him out of the water. He was just about this tall when I saw him I thought he was about this tall. But anyway he was very appreciative and thanked everybody. The people did our training they were there and presented the people that did a lot of the work with the challenge coins and awards. It was a very nice evening. It was very humbling so if you see some of the firemen not only our own firemen but some of the guys from Flores and Drakeville, the sheriff's deputies, the dispatchers tell them thank you because if it wasn't for that whole team working together that night we wouldn't have got through that. For some of you didn't know a gentleman was on the ice. He fell through. Our initial dispatch was he's about 100 feet off the boat dock. We got there he was approximately about 400 feet out in the water. So luckily when we went out there we took enough ropes and harnesses with us the conservation boys brought a John boat and we were able to get it out there and get him out. So I want to thank everybody for that. I want to thank the city council for allowing us the money to put on get some of this training and have it. There was already ice rescue equipment in our budget for next year so hopefully we'll be more prepared hopefully we never use it again but if we do it'll be it's a good deal. The other thing it was just something I wanted to run by the city council and I didn't know if they thought about it or not. With all the tree limbs that are down is there any way that we could work a deal with maybe the school when they do Mustang pride days? To get like 300 kids to help pick up some of those limbs at least get them to the curb. I'm sure the elderly people would really appreciate it. Then I think they just work till noon. Noon maybe the city council and some of the other individuals could help serve I think the certain hot dogs and stuff.
Right.
Yeah. We serve the kids often and donuts and stuff after they work at the church there. So maybe that's something we could do as a community project. Twist the spirit around like I said I'm sure the elderly people would appreciate it. I know we did the first round of pickup my limbs were still frozen under snow so.
Right.
When is Mustang pride day?
It's mid April.
Twenty eighth of April. Is that right?
No.
It's in April.
Yeah.
Fourteenth something like that.
Yeah fourteenth or eighteenth or something.
Rain.
Yeah with the rain day.
It's just an idea I had I was just going to throw it out. Other than that everybody's doing good down at the fire station. Grass fire season officially started last week. Guys had a couple today. So hopefully everybody will behave through the night because if it takes off tonight it'll be in the next county before we get there. So that's all I really got. Thank you.
Thanks Jim. Rec director. Main street.
Hi. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce to you our new executive director Jeanne Dorman. She started oh last month yeah. So she's been on the job now a couple of weeks. She's from near X-Line she has a lot of experience with Centerville's Main Street served as volunteer in different capacities on the board and different executive positions for the last several years. She's learning about Bloomfield and we're glad to have her.
Welcome. Welcome. You're welcome. We got your reports.
I will let you know though we are going to be starting our investment drive April first. April it will last about six weeks so until then mainly hope to get some more private donations through that effort and then also we will be starting to redo our website which we also hope will encourage more people to donate get involved and then even outsiders to take an interest.
Alright thanks. DC DC.
Well I would say Jimmy knows where everything in Bloomfield is now right? So I took her on a two and a half hour tour or two hour tour.
Wonder for sure.
Yeah and we kind of went around and just got familiar with some of the things. I guess I'm not going to take a lot of time I'll try to go through this pretty quickly. This is my work calendar. The only thing I want to point out is that Davis County Soil and Water Conservation, Regional Housing Trust Fund, the hospital Helen's eyes and eye shots and her cardiac treatments my son grandson's basketball games are all on Thursday night. So I apologize for not doing a better job getting here it just seems like it's awful easy when I do get a Thursday night without anything going on just to not do anything. But I will try to try to do better I promise alright. I took a course when they first gave me this job you can see the date on it it's 2007 Heartland Economic Development and this kind of comes to my reason for not being here as often maybe as I should be either. I had two salesmen work for me at the garage Greg and Bill they were straight commission. When they got laid into the pay period and they hadn't sold very much they would come in and they'd say my god I gotta sell a car today. And I would look at them and say no you don't have to start a seller you can't just go out and sell a car today you've got to start doing the things that it that will result in the sale of a car eventually down the road because those are the only things you really have control over. So a lot of what they talk about in here is those same kinds of things and one of the things they talk about is vision and one of the stories that came on that I liked was two salesmen went to Australia. One of them wrote back and said there's no opportunity here the natives don't wear shoes. The other one sent back and said great opportunity here the natives don't wear shoes. I thought it was kind of interesting so it's not about winning it's about not being eliminated. Basically we have to give these people that we want to come here what they want not what we want. And the last thing I want to talk about and that's kind of here is confidentiality. They told a story about a group that came to Kansas City for a project no last names, no luggage pegs and they showed up on a bus. The economic development people were there to show them around but there had been rumors in the community who it might be and one of the volunteers apparently goes up to one of the individuals and says I hope you end up coming here my wife really likes your products. The whole group got on the bus and left. And I don't know whether the story is true or whether the people that ran the course made it up but it's set pretty heavy with me. This is why my board is so key because I cannot come here public to a public meeting and talk about projects that I've got going on or the things I've done or the things that have happened in the community that we've had our figures yet. There's a real thing about business and government folks alright and most businesses until they want something from you guys and I was the same as anybody else want to maintain a separation. It's just that simple. I suppose you in business probably understand what I'm saying. Having said all that I apologize again and I'll try to do better getting here. There is a report I want to go over real quick called the best report. I do a synchronous visit with most of our major manufacturers private manufacturers not the hospitals or the school. M3 Performance Pipe Ability Products Broadleaf Lumber. It's a five to eight page report it takes two and a half hours to sit down and go through it. All the information is anonymously sent to the state the Iowa Department of Economic Advancement and they put out what they call the best report alright. The best report says that the number one issue is Iowa's workforce. Three out of four 71% of the companies interviewed stated they're experiencing workforce recruitment problems. 375 companies 46% interviewed have plans to expand over the next three years but 71% rated their workforce availability is low or less than a three on a scale of seven. We're talking about workers and that immediately turns right into housing. You got to have a place where people live if you want to come here and live and work. The second thing is land 41% of the companies have plans to expand 143 companies indicate they have no room to expand. We have two companies that are growing that are out of room to expand. I have three projects two that want to do something right now and one potential one and be honest with you guys I don't have anywhere to put them alright. This is our industrial park. And the thing that's really scary is that two of these companies are young people and they're people that one of them is potentially be a 100 employee company within another five or 10 years and I'm not going to mention anything we all know probably what's going on anyway. If you look at it this is all public knowledge it's all on the internet I printed off the internet a lot of the stuff I wrote in the legend's at the right so you can take the PP and you can see that Performance Pipe and HK is Herman Coons alright. The thing I want to get into here is that overall the industrial park there is no property there that's available. Now I've talked to Herman Coons about selling something to the to the west side of his property maybe half of that and giving me room to get a road to the back. I've talked to Performance Pipe to see if they'll give up some of their lots and we went and sold them. By the way they bought those lots you can see they bought two of them for $15,900 and one for $9,000 and the other one in the back for $9,000. This is in the upper left of the of the park. That was in March 1989 exactly 30 years ago. So it gives you an idea what they what they sell for. If you look at number one there's some land to the west side of the east side of Gannon Corp and maybe we can squeeze something in there I've already talked I've talked to all these people already. Mark Herman Coons is number two this is in the green circle. Number three is Performance Pipe and Jonas said he'll bribe me lunch next time he's in from Plano Texas and we can talk a little bit. I don't know if he'll do anything. Number four that is owned by a company and called Big Three Investments down in Kansas or St. Louis and I tried to get something to do with them before. Next to that is that land sold an acre and a half in there for $25,000. So it gives you an idea kind of what the pricing and stuff is. David Winters from Missouri his son runs Car Wash out here if you don't know him owns 160 acres south of our industrial park Werthridge's owns the land to the east of our industrial park Jeff Kincart and Doug Berryman each have a 40 on the south west corner none of them are interested in selling anything at all of course as farmers and the reason is they would sell the land if they could buy some more land but if they sell it and don't buy any more land then they get into capital gains and all that kind of stuff it's difficult. And with Werthridge I said well if we even if you had land somewhere else this land is connected to our land we don't want to have to go two miles down the road with the plan or every time we want to do something. So we're kind of jammed alright. Because as I say a couple of these companies are talking about doing something already. So I don't want to get any further into it than that the next time I come here I do want to talk a little bit about land I want to talk about housing. And we do have our property to the west of Lilac Street down West Street to North Street and over to Highway 64 and north is in an opportunity zone. And if you heard the president's statement the other day he talked about opportunities zones a little bit in his speech. In a nutshell an opportunity zone says that if you've got a capital gain you bought Walmart stock for 10 bucks and now it's worth 500 or whatever or you bought land for 1,000 it's worth 6,000 now. If you will take if you sell your your product your land or your shares you do not pay the 15% tax on that capital gain for seven years and then you only pay on 70% of the gain. But the neat thing about it is any money you make by investing that money into an opportunity zone over that period of time no income tax. There are 139 no 239 hub zones in the state of Iowa and the hub zones they took when they made the opportunity zones they said okay we got 239 of these Iowa you can have 60 of them and you overlay them as an opportunity zone. So we're in a hub zone also. In a hub zone if you have a government bid like M3 wants to bid on a government project they could be 15% higher than the next bid the government will still buy from them. It's an economic incentive program okay? So all that land over there that's in the opportunity zones there were that were going to the governor was to pick 60 of the 300 and 239 she was going to pick 60 of them the opportunity zones under this new was in the tax program that did when President Trump first come into office. We got selected I got a deal from Area 15 filled it out had no idea where it was getting put a lot of sales stuff and talked a lot and they picked us so we're in that process. What it means is this there's going to be people in in maybe Minneapolis and Albuquerque New Mexico and San Diego and New York City where you're going to have people that have got a lot of wealth and they've got capital gains and they're going to get with accounting projects and then they're going to scour the country in these opportunities zones looking for places to invest their money. When I went to the meeting in Des Moines and this is going a little further and I wanted to but I'll finish on this they had three guys there one had done a 96 unit apartment thing up one had done a hotel right next or using this process one had done a hotel on the north side of Des Moines from the area where it's not you know maybe the best best area and one is the housing builder. I went up afterwards and I said I've got lakefront property and his eyes got as big as Cuba alright. But to be able to do something with that I mean it's conceivable we could get somebody that would come in and put in the roads the infrastructure do the whole thing build the houses and our taxes income would go through the roof. So it's a thought alright. Those are the kinds of things I see as opportunities for us but we've got it we've got to do something. First of all we I got packing I found out we own that property but we've never annexed it into the city and that would have to be handled without a doubt. The state of Iowa is calling me saying what kind of projects do you have you're in the opportunity zone. And I'm basically saying well I don't have any land to put that kind of commercial interest on even though I have two people that want to build something right now okay? And I don't have any place for the houses at least around the lake for the more expensive houses which is what you'd want to have there because we don't have. So we we're kind of like Greg and Bill we need economic development but we've got to start doing the things that set us up so we're in a position to bid and catalyze other things if we get an opportunity to do. Probably not maybe what you wanted to hear from me but that's the way it is okay? And if you've got questions guys individually you can come in and see me I will have a confidentiality statement here pretty simple that you got to sign just says it doesn't go through in my office but I will talk to you anytime any of you alright? So thank you much appreciate it. Alright if you've got any questions I'm sorry excuse me. Comments? At all?
Thanks.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Well that's alright I need to talk to you too when you get a chance alright? I'll be in the office tomorrow if you get time.
That's good.
Thank you.
Prove change order number six from Drish construction amount $244,657.87 for the 2019 proposed water main and wastewater improvements division two sanitary sewer.
So if you guys had read through your packets there should have been the memo from us that sums up the sanitary sewer project and the water main project that you guys did last year was covered by a CDBG grant. Both bids came in under the estimate the engineers estimated cost which means there's money left over in that grant. In talking with Jeremy in your sewer department they expressed interest in repairing a sanitary manhole that's in the backyards between Hillcrest and the next street east of Hillcrest drawing a blank on that one. And the sanitary sewer line is also in the rear yards there where that was laid at a very shallow slope and it's causing a maintenance issue and regular backups. Jeremy represented us they had to get out there about every week to clean it out. So with these extra funds and with city council's direction about last October we started the process of preparing a change order for it and we got the total amount from Drish of Seeing as we didn't really know how much was available on the grant we had the contractor and we split it out to fix just the main issue of that sanitary manhole and the shallow line in the backyards and pared it down to just what we've been calling the morning side sanitary sewer repair. And that change order would be for $119,189.67. So the the moral of the memo it's all detailed out in the memo if you guys want to go through it I'll fill in the blanks. The CDBG grant has enough to do the full change order or you guys can elect to do just the part of the morning side work and save a little money. The CDBG if you guys don't know is kind of a matching grant you guys usually put in 50% of the city money and then the state kicks in 50% of that match. So if you don't we're talking about a difference between the full change order and the less change order about $120,000 here. So if you don't go with the full one by the time we close out the grant coming back there'd be about $60,000 coming back into the city budget that you wouldn't have used with with the matching grant.
So if we do both of them it shouldn't impact our budget.
No you don't correct yes. I think about that correct. You don't have to put in any more money for the matching grant and there is money as the grant's currently written to cover the total change order.
I think if we've got the money set aside for it to fill out the grant we go ahead.
Yeah grant's already filled out we've confirmed the money's there it's just a little bit on the procedure side because this that grant's got the water main and the sanitary sewer project in it that kind of split the total grant amount into two phases so it's just a little bit of juggling the money on the grant side of it just to move we'll have to take a little bit from the water main that the water main doesn't need and put it into the sanitary sewer project.
What's your plan for it?
So Drish was actually ready and wanting to be onsite next week. When we were on the city council meeting we came last February to try and discuss this and at that time we may not have been as prepared as what we should have been. So now Drish is probably would be two weeks out from today before they show up onsite. The large issue they're going to have is ordering the manholes. The supplier from Drish said the manholes are going to take about 10 day lead time to get them here and then once they have the manholes they'll be able to show up onsite and get going. And Drish wants to get this done their first project first part of the first one of the spring.
How long do you do that thing? I've already had people call me asking about this they're concerned about time and all that so just so we have people that they would know.
I don't know for sure how long they're expecting to take but personally if I had a judge probably no more than two months and that might be a little long because Drish is hoping to get in do this project quick and get onto their large summer project.
Just like I answered before you called again.
Yep and I'll I can follow up with an email tomorrow with you after I call Drish and get what they expect their timeline to be.
The problem is we got three different numbers. Number on the agenda is different than the number on my sheet which is different than the number that you just gave me.
Yeah so Drish actually so this memo came in this memo was sent in on Monday. Drish called me on Wednesday after the packets were all put together and gave me this new number so the for the work just on the morning side the number that Drish is going to honor And then the full change order is $247,457.87. And I do apologize that that wasn't correct and I couldn't get it the information to you guys sooner. But those would be the correct amounts for the change orders and what you'll see on the line.
Is there any issue with changing the amount? Not much.
This is your question as far as like the funds being still available.
Well, the amount is... It's not on the agenda, right? It's...
Oh.
Not quite $3,000 difference.
We could, you could approve it for that amount. We could come back with change order number seven in two weeks, because I'll be back in two weeks if that's the way you guys want to do it.
I'm okay approving it with the 247.
I'm not worried about the dollar, man. Everything has to be exact. We'll approve this one, then we'll bring back change order number seven for the difference.
Okay.
Move to approve change order number seven.
Second?
And this is, this is the entire change order for the work on it, the 200...
For the 244,657,87, I think. The amount in engine. All in favor? Discussion of options for using sponsored project funding and provide direction for city staff moving forward. Presentation of the program, representation of HR group.
So this is the, as we all know, you guys are redoing your sanitary sewer plant or expanding it. And part of those funds, you guys were able to capture, capture back that loan amount through an SRF-funded project. The one big caveat with an SRF-funded project is that the project has to directly focus on improving water quality. So projects that would improve water quality are typically permeable pavers, bio-retention cells, bioswells, native landscaping, and soil quality restoration. And digging through contracts and previous agreements, when the city decided to build their solar field, part of that agreement with the land swap between the school and the city council was you guys signed a 28E agreement with them. And in that agreement, you guys did state that the, they had first shot at these SRF funds for their Parkway project. So what I'm getting at here tonight is, as, as it would look right now, the city council kind of has three options. Either you guys can give all of the SRF funds over to the school, or allow the school to use as much as the SRF funds that are budgeted for that Parkway project. You guys may be able to negotiate with the school that the school would do less of a project, allowing the city some of the SRF funds. And there always is the option to say the city's just going to give the SRF funding back to the state, and you guys aren't going to do anything. But that's kind of here tonight to get direction and see what the city council would like to do with these funds. You guys do have a meeting tomorrow with the SRF loan officers and program directors that leave Andy's in on that meeting.
Nine per hour, eleven.
Yep. So and part of that meeting's going to be, what, what does the city want to do with their project? And that's kind of going to get the ball rolling into getting you guys this SRF water quality project and being able to recapture that money through this grant.
So if I remember right, when they presented on these, they had, I think, three different kinds of projects. So it seems to me there's a fourth option, which is the city could just say, "We're going to do one of those projects." I mean, that the grant isn't dependent on that. There may then be issues with the school district, but the city could just say, "We're going to, we're going to do one of these other projects."
Right. And then you, yeah, then the city and the school district are going to have their own legal agreement clash because of that 28E agreement you guys did when you did the land swap for the solar fields.
Does anyone talk to the school or...
Well, I don't think we have time to talk to the school if he's meeting with them tomorrow. We have to make a decision.
You don't, you wouldn't necessarily have to make a decision now, but it's, it would be nice to know, are you guys going to talk with the school and try and negotiate with them? Are you just wanting to give all the, the majority of the funds and let the school complete this Parkway project that's listed in the 28E agreement? Or are you guys just going to forfeit the funds and return them back to the...
I don't want to do that.
I think the VNR just wants to know if we're going to do something.
Yeah, that's most of the point, and then to kind of integrate, introduce you guys into...
I don't know that the specific project has to be designated yet. I think they just want to know, are we going to do a project or not do a project?
Great. The ball will get rolling and get started at tomorrow's meeting, and they'll actually want to start narrowing down the specific project after tomorrow's meeting.
I think we got to talk to the school and see what their plans and interests are.
I mean, the, the thing that you can do is offer the option, offer them to, to accept the option that we had in the 28E. If they say, "No, we decided we don't want to do that," then we do what we want to do. But if we give them the option, repair some fences with the school, and if they...
I think it makes sense to sit down and figure out what the school wants, because if there's a, if there's a project there that makes sense for the city, there's no sense creating an issue.
I don't know. It's our job to go to the school.
We...
I mean... If they're aware of these projects and know about it, how come they haven't come to the city?
If they do want the money, the project has to go towards the water treatment or the water purification or...
Water, water quality.
Quality, thank you. And that's sort of that type of a project, right?
Yeah. Whether it's the school or whether it's the city doing the project, it has to go towards a water quality.
If the school wants their money, they do this project as the end product, kind of assist us in our issues with our wastewater treatment, you know, with the overflow and also having this done, whether it's through the school's project or our project, that's progress towards helping our overall issue of the wastewater treatment, correct?
I would have to follow up with Matt Wildman. He has a better hand on why they're experiencing your overflows and the wastewater treatment issues.
But I think the general issue Jake's getting at, that's kind of my point, is if, I don't think, it doesn't really matter where, if we have an objective to reduce the, I forget the name, the overflow.
INI. Infiltration.
Yeah, that's our objective citywide. And there's a place there where it makes sense, and it's over there where the track is, where the Musler Center is, where the fall fields are, where the pool is. I mean, I, I mean, it could be a case of a, what is it they say, solution in search of a problem, or kind of looking, there may not, there may not be an issue. I think it just makes sense to talk to the school district and see what they have in mind. And it may be a spot that works, when we looked at that project, it looks like some of the spots there were some of the best spots to do this kind of project anyway. So it may not be an issue to fight over. I just think it makes sense. I wouldn't want to commit right away. I certainly don't want to just hand money over. And I don't think we want to commit right now. But I think it makes sense to sit down and talk and say, "Do we have interests here that are similar where this would make sense?" That's mine. And I don't know if that's sufficient for tomorrow's call.
That's a good point, Congressman. My takeaway for the meeting tomorrow is simply going to be more of an information meeting, and they, what, I was left with what you said, misspoke, and that is, they, they wanted answers what, what direction the city's going to move. I'm not in a position to state what that's going to be, but they want to know, you know, it's time to pursue the project or not, is what I was told.
I'm in favor of us pursuing the project.
And I can, I can try to get a hold of Mayor and see, get the ball rolling on some kind of meeting and figure out what...
If council agrees that, I'm just going to, as you said, I'll take the notes from the meeting tomorrow and share those with council. Beyond that, I'll, for the council.
Okay. So it sounds like to me you guys are going to, you're in agreement, you're going to go negotiate with the school and work with the school district to figure out if they're one project or if they're even going to do anything. Then from there, you guys will be able to figure out what, what we can do from there on the city side.
Any project that's working towards that common goal, I think. It's just, who's giving the money first? We need to find out.
The, the phrase used in the 28E agreement is, the school district is the first right of refusal.
Right. But we need to find out what they want to do.
Yep. So if, if you guys run into a problem, you can contact either myself or Teresa Stottlemann, and we can help the school district with about three projects that we've identified for, for them that would meet these funding.
Mayor, if I recall, I think I want to pitch you on the spot, I think that the one you sent, there's something like five or six projects, or maybe that was something that I...
There's, yeah, there's five or six projects.
And I've got that ready to, to discuss tomorrow.
Only three of them really deal with like school district and school district property. That's why I narrowed it down. The other, the other two that he would have sent would have been city projects themselves.
Or maybe it was on the street.
So that's, I think I've got what I needed here and how you guys are going to proceed. So that's all I needed out of the kind of this item.
Is that it on that? Discuss and give direction on salary for the finance manager position. I put that on there, just on the page that we talked about at the last meeting. Just everybody was supposed to, if you got a copy of this, everybody should be in their packets, drop two. My only question was, is the number that we offered that position last, we have the 2% in it for the scale.
Mayor, I know when you and I talked about this earlier this week, I, I want to make sure and break down, we, we talked about the 2%. And, but I guess for starters, then, the 2%, you're talking about the 2% that's built into FY '21 then?
The 2% that was then for current, right?
2019.
2019. For 2019. I don't, the, this is rather dated. My guess is the 2% probably is not in there.
Well, this says right here, effective July 1, 2019. That's the number we use under that call, right? And COLA is the, for, the July 1, 2020 is to be determined.
So that number then would have the 2% added.
Yeah, it looks like it. My bifocals are working.
Yep.
On July 1, that would go up by the COLA, it looks like. I don't know how that's determined, if it's automatic or voted off.
I would call that, say the 2.5. I'm going to talk about the union contract at that point, right?
No, that's, yes, union, that, so this would be different.
Right.
Well, in the past, that's always what it's followed, but... That's the only question I was wanting to clarify and make sure that that number was the correct number that we was using for that. So everybody's in agreeance of 2%? Senator Ertz?
I can't follow this thing close enough to know.
I was just asking Darren, is this the 2%?
I'll say yours, and then it moves over, but then it...
July 1, 2020, so this will be effective, this is effective until July 1. You're asking if this offer we gave the candidate was this or this?
Well, it was this number.
Okay. That's what I thought.
But is that, because we start at the top of the scale, but does it have the 2, is that 2%?
If you go up to the top, the column that says that's effective. And at the column to the right is the same, because if you look at that, it says to be determined. If you go up to the top of that column, it says, so that, that number in, in the far right column will change July 1 based on whatever we determine, right?
So yes, from what I understand, what we offered was including the 2%.
Discuss and decide how to note and handle closed session items, including possible discussion and decision regarding ways to reduce the number and frequency of closed sessions.
So I asked to put this on there, but it was because of a question that was raised and when we were setting the agenda and they got enough, you want to...
Well, it's, it's...
Say on your issues or...
No, it's, it's the same thing I've been saying all along. I believe that the law is pretty clear that when setting the agenda, that we should have a topic. And when you read the Iowa code, turn it up here, 21.5, and you go to subsection 2, it refers to, and this is about halfway into subsection 2, a government body shall not discuss any business during a closed session, which does not directly relate to a specific reason announced as justification for a closed session. Now, and as we all aware, when you're in closed session, you're not allowed to speak about any topic other than what's, the topic is about. You look at our agenda, there's no topic. All it says is closed session. And I'm not saying that we have to reveal names. I'm not saying that we have to endanger reputation or anything like that, just a simple topic that would just simply satisfy this, this need. It's, it's a right for the citizens to know what we're going in closed session on, for our own. I've come into these meetings several times, not having any idea what the closed session is about. I'd ask about it when I get here. No way to prepare for it. I just think that the law is pretty clear that it's, that the general, the general public has the right to know what the topic is of a closed session. We've had our attorney here a couple of weeks ago, if I remember right, one or two weeks ago. She stated that she did not think it was that much of a deal to add the extra verbiage on the agenda. I'm just saying this for our own protection, so that when we do go into a closed session, we know what it's about. And like I just read on Iowa code 21.5, subsection 2, you have to have a topic so that you know what to say on, to stay on topic and not defer from that topic. That's all I'm trying to, that's for our protection. If we do this improperly, each one of us up here on this council can be fined up to $2,500 for knowingly going into a closed session illegally. So I'm just, this is looking for my protection and our protection as a council.
So my, my question is, as I thought through this issue, because it first seemed pretty simple, and then as I thought through it. So we had the city attorney here, and she said the notices as are put in the agenda meet the legal requirement. And the code states that if we rely on the advice of our attorney, then the city and council have complied with their obligations, that they're protected. So for me personally, as we, I guess what I'd say is if there's a dispute about that legal advice, that's why I put the second item on the agenda. If there's a dispute about that advice, I think rather than us trying to hash it out, if we're making a determination based on legal requirements, we ought to just get a second opinion. In terms of just figuring out, do you add something? So for me personally, originally it seemed like, yeah, just, just do that. But then just thinking it through, well, so then procedurally, how's that done? So if we're, now if we're going to stray beyond this sort of stock language, who is it that we're going to put in charge of that? And then at that point, we're outside the advice of our attorney, so then someone's got, you know, risk there if there's a mistake. And that's just what I think we need to work through. I'm not opposed to adding language to... I'm not opposed to adding language to the agenda. I just want to make sure that we, we're not putting someone at City Hall or someone else in a position where we've not given them guidance, and they're now, you know, having to wing it. And on the hiring side, it seems easy. On the discipline side, and on the negotiation side, in those sessions, that's when I could see it getting more difficult. And then you're going to raise, you're going to raise questions with the public. If we noted with some, and then all of a sudden we don't for certain items, are we going to cause issues with the public? Those are just the things that I think we need to think through. I mean, the idea, I like the idea, this sort of simplicity of it, I'm not opposing any more information. I just need to make sure we have the ability to really think through and, I guess, implement that without stubbing our toe. That's my, that would be my only concern.
Yeah, I agree with you on as far as, we need to be careful. And it's not my objective here to put us in a regular, the verbiage. I'm just simply stating, and I have no problem with giving advice from our council as to the verbiage. I'm just saying, where it says here, closed sessions, we can say closed sessions for DPW discussion. That's not divulging any information, whether.
Yeah, that one's easy. Yeah, that one's.
Or for personnel matters, you know, if it's for disciplinary or something to that effect. It does not have to be specific.
That's pretty much what's cited in code section. The only thing I would say is whatever portion of the section you're using, highlight it, like if it's for appointment, highlight appointment.
I would be good with that.
If it's hiring, performance, hiring or performance, highlight hiring. Highlight performance, highlight discharge. Just don't add any words, just highlight the words that you're, the word that it's referring to.
So the other thing you, I guess the other thing you could do is you could add, like Jake suggested, if we're comfortable with the city attorneys signing off on closed session agenda items, which. Gets to the other issue I think I put in here, which is that we have way too many closed sessions. When you look at other cities, that's part of the problem. We have way too many closed sessions. And that, if that, if the number of closed sessions that we have, when that normalizes, we get things squared away, it's probably not going to be that big of an issue to just, you know, run it by the city attorney. And if there's an item on the agenda, if I put an item on the agenda for closed session, and Jake looks at it and says, I'd like these words added, city attorney's got to clear it, and if the city attorney clears it, so be it. There's going to be a minimal cost to the city. But that, if we wanted to add language, that seems like the safest way to do it.
I don't know about that. Due diligence, that's being, good stewards for our public.
I just don't want, as I thought about, I just, I don't want to put Sandy or Andy or Keely or someone like that in a position to make the decision that they're not, that we've not given them the tools to decide, that's.
You know, that's smart, I agree.
If that, if I have this correct, would that be the, I guess, reason justification then for bringing in Heather to weigh in on that particular?
Yeah, just because it's a legal requirement, it seems like, you know, just shoot her an email. If anyone, it seems to me, if any council member wants something added to the agenda, that, you know, that should be, that shouldn't be an issue. So if I put something on closed session, and Earl doesn't like the way, doesn't think it exposes enough, and he wants to add it, it seems to me like that's, you know, you want, on closed session items, if Earl says, hey man, I think it should say hiring DPW. Okay. Heather clears it, that to me seems like, then it ought to be added. And then we're not trying to decide it on our own, you know. I just want to make sure we're not adding something that then will cause another issue.
Well, I don't think the public's going to uproar over this, over the fact of us hiring anybody other than if they're disciplined or discharging somebody. They think they, it's their right for them to know about the punishment issues, and it's not their right to know till after we make a decision. I think that's where all that comes from, and where it's coming from. And as the city government, we have the right, under these laws, to do it the way we're doing it, and let them know when we make a decision. It's a whole bunch of mumbo jumbo that somebody's stirring up over nothing. Because it's not been done wrong in the past. It's just somebody's wanting to just stir the pot.
In the past, two years ago or more, there was always a topic.
There wasn't.
I disagree with you.
Well, I've talked to Sandy, and Sandy said this is the way she's done it for 12 years since she's been here. And what does the last two years have to do with anything?
Well, change in hierarchy.
So Gary did that?
No.
I didn't do it.
No, but in the past, we always had it, I remember us having a topic, so.
You might want to go back and look.
I think even if it's the way it's been done in the past, and even if that way is right, if there are council members that want additionalized, additional description, and there's no legal downside, you're right, you're 100% right. The employee discipline is where it's going to get hairy, and that's where definitely, that's why I say it's got to get cleared by the city attorney. Especially if it's, because the employee has a right, has the ability to request that that be done in closed session. And so that's where it, I could see it getting dicey. Negotiating property, I could see us needing to be real careful with that, so we don't shoot the city in the foot by, you know, doing negotiations publicly. So that, I 100% agree, I can see it getting dicey. But to me, it seems like if the city attorney clears it, and we're not hurting the city, I don't, personally, I don't see the harm. And even though I agree with Heather, I think the way we've done it in the past is fine. I think adding a few words is fine too, as long as we don't get ourselves in hot water. And we need to make sure we've thought about all those other situations, not just the ones we're dealing with right now. That's.
Any more on that? Let's see, put that in, and do your motion. You need, I'm just trying to take this out. I mean, you want to have your eye then to contact, I need to know what you're calling. If that's something council wants to do, then I'll do it. If something I don't want to do, it means you like the status quo. Maybe you know I can make it now.
I think if we don't do something, the issue's going to keep coming up. That's, so.
I think, I think we had a topic, unless a three, city attorney advises us not to.
Yeah, I guess what I would say is that a description can be added if requested by a council member and approved by the city attorney. Does that make sense?
Yep, that does.
So I guess that would be my motion.
I'll second Matt's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Discuss and decide whether to obtain a second legal opinion regarding the requirements for a closed session.
I don't think we need that. I didn't know which way we want to proceed.
Return hiring responsibilities to the city administrator, city clerk, and mayor. You put that on there, Matt?
Uh, yeah, I believe that was, because we talked about the hiring committee.
We had talked about, yeah, we talked about the hiring committee, not that structure. What I added was up in the closed session, but I can talk about it. So it seems like, to me, it seems like, and I've been a part of the hiring committee, so a big part of this falls on me. But I also backed into Jen's truck a few months ago, and don't necessarily sometimes make the best decisions. So as I was thinking about this, so, you know, I don't think the hiring committee thing has worked well. I think we got, we filled one position excellently, and that was because a candidate was essentially right under our nose. We've been several months without a DPW. I think when we originally talked, that we were going to fill that by January 15. We got Rose Projects around the corner. So one of the reasons why we have so many closed sessions. I think the reason we went to the hiring committee structure was we were in limbo with city administrators. So there is no one to fulfill the 18A duties. I think we've got a city administrator. And I think we're going to be a lot, we're, it's going to be a lot easier for us to fill these positions if we go back to the city administrator doing that. We can do advice and consent to council or whatever kind of structure like that. But if we just give him the charge of, you got these two positions to fill, go fill them. If the salary doesn't work, you don't think the salary is appropriate, do a salary survey, come back to us with the salary survey. And we'll consider changing the pay range, you know, before we post it, or before we post it again, or whatever. But I, to me, I think that's, that's going to get this thing done, because it just seems like we've spent a whole lot of time, and everyone's put in a good faith, a lot of work. But the structure just doesn't seem amenable to hiring. Between the meetings requirements, and by voting members, and you know, posting, and all the things that go along with hiring for a public entity, it just, to me, it doesn't seem like it has worked, and I'll own it. I was involved in the hiring committee, a lot of the decisions on the DPW, I supported. But to me, I looked at it, if I'm looking at it honestly, it's been about like, trying to back into a parking space that someone's already in. So, that's just mine. That was my thought, and it came about when I was looking at closed sessions, because I looked at other cities to see how they post theirs, and I saw they don't have nearly as many as we do. So that made me start asking why, and then.
Well, Mayor, the council just needs to let me know what track you want to take.
So we're looking for a motion to return this to, that to, or are we a motion to keep it as is?
I guess that's what I would think is. I'm interested in people's thoughts, but what I would think is a motion just to return to the, pulling it up now, the 18A. Yeah, 18A.046. Where it talks about the city administrator, supervising and directing, competent of all officers, departments, and employees of the city. Appoint and when necessary, suspend or remove all officers, employees of the city, except those. His appointment, suspension, or removal is otherwise provided for by law or ordinance. That's kind of my thought. Yeah. Subject of reporting. I'm just, I think, what are we talking about, putting those streets out? It was March something.
I think he was going to come back next week with that.
And even I know, I know we've discussed different options with that, and everyone's got their own thought, and, I mean, I just, Andy can see if he input he wants, and he can make a good decision, and if we don't like it, we can deal with him. That's, to me, that.
You know, you want council approval, just like hire whoever you want?
I mean.
No, I think we just said that, I make a recommendation, if the council confirms, denies, or marries.
I mean, I don't know, I was looking at 18A.
We took that away from that.
Administrator, clerk, and mayor make the recommendation?
We did not change that ordinance.
Yeah, we did.
No, the ordinance hasn't been changed.
The ordinance hasn't been changed, but when we hired interim city administrator, we took some of the responsibilities away from him, and those was one of them. That was one of them.
Time to give it back to it.
I mean, it concerns me on some level of management, that we're hiring. I mean, we're filling the gas check. The DPW, I feel like maybe that ought to be. I'd have more input than one person.
Well, actually, kind of what I was thinking is for maybe the administrator, clerk, and DPW positions, I need a little more council input. Any positions after that should be, if it's an outside position, that ought to be the administrator and the DPW and the mayor. Any positions in the office should be administrator, clerk, and the mayor on making the recommendations.
I guess the problem, there's a couple of issues that I have with that. One is you're modifying 18A, 18, and 15 when you do that. Because you're taking away duties from the council and the administrator that are set out of the ordinance, and you're giving them to the mayor.
And it means the mayor's ordinance too.
No, no.
Yeah, they are.
18A overrides the mayor ordinance.
It's word for word, and the mayor ordinance is the same as the administrator ordinance.
I don't, I don't see the hiring and firing in chapter 15. I could have missed, I mean, but I didn't. I don't, I don't see it.
I guess I still prefer recommending to the council.
And I think, and that, that may be the way to go, but I think if that's what we're talking about, you got to amend the ordinance. I mean, I think that's the.
He's right, we did throw 18A out, because we didn't let Andy dismiss somebody as well as without council approval. I don't, I don't have any problem with the council not sitting on the hiring committee. But I would like, still see the recommendation on the hiring committee to the council.
Like DPW or?
Well, anything for that matter, but the DPW needs.
The DPW deal to me is exhibit A why we don't do that. I mean, that's just been a massive, that is, it's an embarrassment. It's, if, you know, do you think that's got anything to do with?
Yes.
Andy not having it all by himself?
Yeah. I do. Because the whole way, and again, I'll fall in the sword for that, because I was on the committee. We went about that all wrong. And I don't think, I think if, if the city administrator had been doing it, maybe we would have followed a different process. That's my, I mean, if you look at, if you just look at what result do we have now? That's not the result we wanted. Right, I mean, that's, and I don't like to admit that I made a mistake, but it clearly, I mean, it wasn't.
We wanted to have someone in there by January 15, and we're, you know. And I just, I think priority number one are the public improvement projects we have going on, and we've got to get something going on that. And even on an interim, I don't see. Even on an interim, I don't see that going smoothly under the same structure. I just, so...
One, one thought of the structure I've seen is something else to consider as well. We did this when I was in the Tumla and that is when we interviewed, let's say, city clerk or a public works director or those in leadership positions. Commonly what would happen is myself and the city clerk would then go and we would do research in terms of the pay scale that they may want to offer. Council said it almost, so it was kind of a communal interview. I'm not saying it's foolproof, but I like that component of it for no other reason. The council obviously can say, why, why did I shut out? Something to consider. Ultimately, the recommendation then would, that's it, a recommendation. So I make a recommendation and then, as I said before, confirm, deny, modify, those are the options. But they did it as they said with the full council.
Now, I do think within 18A, you have the discretion, the city administrator has the discretion to do that, right? You have the discretion to come to, this is an important enough position, I want to have a closed session and introduce this person to the council or talk about this person to the council and obviously, the council overwhelmingly tells you we're opposed to that and do it anyway, that's, you know, I guess that's on you, but I just think, you know, unless we're going to amend the ordinance, we had to kind of stick, to me, I think you got to stick within the ordinance.
I think you better talk to legal counsel about how we changed that ordinance when we hired the interim city administrator. I don't think you can just change it back. The council has told us before that they would recommend that 18A be changed before we reenacted under a new administrator. Guess they did.
I didn't say that.
No, I see attorney, counsel, legal counsel.
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel.
We've not always agreed with them, so...
I guess I've worked with Andy long enough, you had good enough experience with him that I would, I, I have confidence that he can do this and get these two positions filled.
Again, ultimately, it's the council's decision.
I'm not disagreeing with you there about it, but I do know what history has brought us to.
Yeah, and if we had, and I agree with that and I agree with that sentiment, but I think if we were in that position again, then our, what we would do is we would take issue with the city administrator. And at that point, now we're overseeing one person and then that's the person we hold accountable for those decisions. And I don't, I do not disagree with the sentiment of that experience. But like in this case, if, if we give this responsibility to Andy and Andy, if we return this responsibility to Andy and Andy handles it in a way, you know, he ignores what we tell him, handles it in a way that we don't like, then we take issue with him instead of coming in and trying to do that function. I think that's where, that's where we, you know, stubbed our toe and, and I'm worried. I'm worried about the projects we have coming up. I'm worried about the fact that springs on us. And again, I'll take full and hundred percent responsibility for the toe stubbing on the DPW. I'm not trying to pass that blame to anybody else, but I, I think...
So we make a motion pending legal review of that motion or...
I don't know, but we need legal review. I guess I would just move that we return the hiring responsibilities in 18A to the city administrator. I'll leave it at that. If we have issues with it, we can deal with Andy.
I'll second that motion.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Yeah. Discuss and approve housing incentive guidelines and housing incentive abatement schedule.
Do you want me to take it? I sent, I sent the new guidelines. Really, the only thing that was changed was number 12 that talks about the inspections. And I did talk to Steve about this as far as how we wanted it wording per our meeting with the mayor and Andy. And that was the only change made on that, just so we had an inspection process. And that's what he suggested. That's what, out of our meeting, that's what we came up with under his recommendation. And through the meeting, the rest of the guidelines look to be pretty straightforward. This just would be for any new applications that came in.
It may seem here, but what are we inspecting to, are we, is it state code?
It'd be local, state and federal all, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong there, but it would basically be cover all guidelines.
Except there's some state codes we don't, that don't apply. And Bloomingdale, I thought, some of the, like the building code, isn't that the issue?
It's all state, I think.
Okay.
What they use anyway.
It's good to me, I'd move to adopt her approval. I'll second it. Call in favor?
Aye.
The second sheet is the distribution of the incentives, moving to a percentage over a five-year term on out-of-tiff areas. Same cash payout at the initial and then the abatement by percentage rather than a dollar amount has, the dollar amounts will vary. So I thought we should put in something that would be consistent.
So are we giving in non-tiff districts, are we giving in $10,000 and a tax abatement?
That's the way the initial proposal was. The only thing I changed was the abatement portion of it from a dollar amount to a percentage over five years, graduated down.
Is the current five-year or is it three-year?
Was three-year.
On the end of this, are they actually getting more than the 15, I know, we've talked about this...
It'd be hard to know.
Based on the dollar amount of the house.
Right.
Possibility of the non-tiff to actually get more than the $15,000 at the end of five years.
That's correct.
Build a bigger house.
To change, right?
Exactly.
Your money up front is what's going to make a bigger impact.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I told you, I'm just making sure we're clear on the difference here.
Right.
Plus equals 300%. So three years at 100% is basically the same.
It's very close to the same. It's just this allows...
Well, does it start getting money sooner?
We start getting money back.
We do and it also takes that exact dollar amount because that can't ever be that exact dollar amount. So the percentage works better.
Blue bill approved the chief.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Flames?
I didn't see shrimp in this, I guess we're different. Yeah. You know what the cell phone, iPad and tablet are called?
Cell phone, iPad and tablet?
It just has US cellulose in the cell phone, iPad and tablet, like we mentioned before.
for?
What was it purchased for? Was it replacement? Was it a...
It looks like a monthly service.
Yeah, it is because each number, like each, it's my understanding each device has their numbers, so they have to pay for each number every month. So that includes like a cell phone probably for the DPW and the tablets for like the field team and...
So it's just a monthly recurring?
Yes.
Okay. I just saw it. I'm not sure.
Maybe approve on you. Call in favor?
Aye.
Public comments?
Do you have in front of you a memo that Cindy Kendall put together for, as you may recall, she has done some work for the city, basically putting together the budget documents. The sheet you have in front of you, I'll just outline these briefly, we're going to look at that first paragraph. Did everyone have it?
No, we don't have a paper copy of it.
I sent one email and I have a paper as well. I got, I seen the one though.
It wasn't there where...
All right, going back to the items you see, they're listed one through seven. She's going to be in the office, Cindy's coming to Bloomingdale tomorrow, she should be in around nine o'clock. These are the items in terms of work lists that she's going to be working on. You also will note she indicates under what's next, I just put an asterisk next to this. At our regular meeting, March 12th, you will conduct a public hearing, the first one on the national rate we discussed. Council will also be required to pass a resolution following this hearing. You may recall at the last meeting she attended, she wanted a transfer resolution. I did some research on that and she ended up sending me one. Anyway, that's one of the top, one of the items that she'll have with her when she comes here tomorrow. There, let's see, is there any other items that you have here, any other items you have questions on other than the attached budget shows a surplus of a little over $14,000. There's still some items though that she needs some feedback on. I reached out to her today, one of them related to a premium block grant, she would then get back to me when I'm finished with my conference call in tomorrow morning, I'll sit with her and find the particulars of what that coverage is and what is missing. And I would imagine based on the conferences that Andy and I had, we can go at the next regular meeting like that or give another presentation to council. That's all right. Any other questions or comments on that?
Looks like we're balanced.
It is, it's, it's 14,000, it's not a lot, so...
Yeah. Impressive.
Yeah. That includes, that obviously includes those fund transfers she talked about, but we keep going.
And you and Cindy and Andy deserve a sincere appreciation.
She's, we did, Cindy and I worked on the budget estimates and the revenues, but she has, Cindy's really turned this around in terms of putting together the document. The mayor helped as well when we were going through some of the line items, so...
Don't mention mine, he'll live against it.
That's all I've got, unless you have questions or comments.
Okay. You have anything in for reports?
Keep Iowa Beautiful is a program that I believe has been operating in state for the last 15 to 20 years. I've received a, an invite from them for us to participate in this, to be clear, this is not something that city employees have to do. They're largely looking for organizations. I signed up for it. The cleaning period starts in the first part of April and runs to the 15th of May. And again, they will provide trash bags and various other sundry items to help you clean up your community and then they'll, we'll have them hauled off. But anyway, you want additional information about that, I'll have you to send it to you. They said I signed up just myself and unfortunately after I signed up then, they put me in charge of a committee, which I did not plan. So like Rosa Stalin, I'll put something together, that was awesome.
Delegating now.
Yeah, I'll delegate, yeah. Yeah, they, even chairman is awesome. So anyway, that, that's a program that we're coming up, as I said, in terms of that clean that begins in April, ends the 15th of May as I said, and I'll get some more particulars from them, obviously given my title, so keep up the speed on that one.
Thank you.
That's true, I'll be best on the city stuff. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Andy, if you want to send me any, I'll try to...
Okay.
Use those school kids on that.
Any counsel up there? I wanted to thank Keely for her work on the agenda.
Yes, yes, she's done a good job bringing it together. Not an easy task.
Oh, and Sean, I wanted to thank him because it seems like there's been some ordinance enforcement or something, because you think seemed to have quieted down, so.
Maybe I committed the first time through the second, you know, it works the, you know, just kind of got the ball rolling, but it wasn't accomplished yet, at least we have an idea of where we're starting and what direction we're going.
Yep. Something's happened, it's been noticeable, so I appreciate it, Sean.
Do we need the closed session?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Well, Mayor, wait, I do need to visit with council on a matter. Is there one of these that we could go into closed session and discuss for a little bit because I need to follow up on an item that'll also be in open.
I don't think we want the new folds under here.
We're going visiting again people in the state auditor's office today, that's what I need to share with council. All right, you don't have to go...
He's got a, he's got a handout for us to look at, we can't talk about it or discuss it, we can just look at it and then we got to give it back to them.
I've got them with me, so I'll hand those out right now if you want, if you want to. Those are findings from the, from the audit. And again, as the mayor said, I was instructed to hand those out, you can look at them for And again, as the mayor said, and I was instructed, hand those out, you can look at them for five seconds, you can look at them for five hours, it's up to you. And I've written, the names are all written on those, so I need to have those turned back to me, and then at some point in the not-too-distant future, and we'll set a date and time, myself and the council, you need to respond to those items that are set forth.
I don't think we quite better do that tonight.
Will you at least want me to hand the documents out, so you can see what they look like?
I think you can hand them out.
Yeah, just give them back to me, as I said, when... We met today for, I met with Jennifer approximately 45 minutes, and we went through the document, she read them pretty much verse in scripture. And then, again, sent, made the comment, put this in front of council, so they can just look at it. Again, no discussion, if you want to discuss it when you leave here, that's up to you. But I need to turn back into me and then, at some date, and you need to set a date certain, and then there's a 10-day period, but you need to respond. Council members need to respond to the items set forth. As an example, if you'll turn to page 8, let's see, about three-quarters of the way down that, down the page, recommendation says response and conclusion, that's where I need input from council. I literally can't see anything beyond that.
This is addressed, do we need to respond to this, or will there be a final comment?
It's due, I believe, and I'll verify this, and I believe this is the final document that's in front of you. I mean, she didn't hand me anything else, I'll verify that.
But sometimes she might be looking for a response, like a request to change or something.
Yeah, and as you said, one of the items that needs to be addressed, I wish we had a little bit more room, but again, the response and conclusion, it's a pretty narrow field. And I don't know whether that's standard operating procedure from state auditor's office or not, but they have that pretty succinct one. Do you want to write along?
I don't know how we can respond, I'm talking to everybody. But I think it has to be public, I don't know how, try to get clarification.
I will get clarification in my mind, let's meet that. What, what will happen, though, is when, again, after you hand these to me, and I hand this back to me, and then we, they have that 10-day period, at that point, the council member, you're supposed to build them out on your own, and then turn those to me...
And if we don't, what happens?
I've had, we didn't talk about that, but you know, I'll ask Jennifer what the consequences are, but I need those turned back to me. Because they have to process them, and then we have to report back. Obviously, we have to take steps of what we're doing then to address, let's just say shortcomings that pointed out in the middle of the office. Ma'am, I make a note of what you had of my counsel, and you need to discuss them, can they meet?
Just what the, what the procedure is that we need to... I mean, I've responded to similar things before, just never in this...
Going on, I will say, was when we had our conversation today, she made note that the items that are set forth in this, the document, in a way, the re-audit, as she called it, and getting responses back, she indicated as well that it will not be uncommon for other items, it may not be a function of what you thought was just going to be in there. She's had, that those come up as well. I guess the best way to give an example is, when they're looking for answers to these, it may not be uncommon for them at all to dip below the surface and identify other items, like times of meetings, or documents that are not processed properly. Where there's a little bit like this. Obviously, we, we rely... We're not supposed to discuss it, are we? No, you're not supposed to discuss it. Procedures, you can consider, but the items here, again, she...
One of these items, we rely on the engineers to guide us.
Again, I would include that in your responses.
Andy, I'm not gonna write anything on here, would you mind follow up on the time that you had, when you, and then how we...
We, yeah, that's right.
Because it seems like that's something we're probably on.
It's up to council to, or find a date that's best, it's just I gotta watch that 10, 10-day...
Good, a few days.
A 10-days to, for the responses. She said that they were a bit flexible on that.
If you don't mind, see if you can get some extra time, and maybe we can just do it at the next council, maybe.
I made a note about that, asterisk, that's something.
See if we can email that, so we, or at least, yeah, some place where we can discuss it.
All right. But I'll ask for that, to whether or not you guys can maybe discuss it.
We haven't turned it. Heard me.
All right, I'll follow up on that.
Is it the same thing with dinner?
Regular audit. Signoration, please.
Nothing else, you're mayor pro temp, huh?
That's what it says, but I haven't been mayor pro temp for years.
Jeff Anderson was the last term, really?
In fact, sure. Yeah. Yeah, I was for one year.
You guys are Trump-level, aren't you?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're gonna have a harder time than Stalin, I think. Is the booty maker off from Keely?
Oh, no, it's still going.